We good? Okay. I will call the meeting order and welcome everybody to the Tuesday, July 22nd, City Council Meeting. We are streaming live on City Madison's YouTube channel and archiving it there. We do have Councilman Josh Schaefer attending remotely. We'll note that for the record. Like all of other meetings, we will begin by standing and inviting you to recite the Lord's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll get into tonight's business. Thank you.
[Inaudible] Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to remind everybody to use their microphones tonight, and here I forgot to turn mine on. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Patrick Tevanell.
Here.
Carla Krebs.
Here.
Lucy DiTillo.
Here.
Josh Schaefer is remote. Joel Storm.
Here.
Sorry. Joel Storm is absent. Jim Bartwood.
Here.
And Josh Wilber is absent.
Okay. Council, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes from last meeting of June 17th? So will they entertain a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
As we move into the reports, recommendations of other business from standing and select committees, I want to introduce one of our guests, Gary Smith from REIT Financial, and I want to tee up tonight. Tonight, we wanted to do a lot of education. Education on the legislative changes that occurred during this past session. I spoke about it frequently in council meetings. We did our best throughout the, at the course of the legislative session to inform the public and invite the public to also reach out to their state legislators about the changes that was happening with regard, excuse me, to property tax reform and other bills such as what's on the agenda tonight is the impact on the City of Madison's budget from Senate Bill 1, which is the primary property tax reform bill, and then House Enrolled Act 1461, which with, which relates to road, the road funding formula. There, there was a lot of bills, there was probably almost 200 bills that were signed, signed into law through this legislative session, and they affected all units of government, the cities, the towns, townships, counties, libraries, school corporations, health departments. Everybody was affected by essentially an overhaul of how property taxes will be levied in the future and what that means to our budgets. So we have invited our financial advisor, Gary, to give a, an overview of these particular, two particular bills and the financial impact, and I think it's very relevant because City Council and the mayor's office here, we're already working on the 2026 budget and starting to implement the impacts from Senate Bill 1, and it will take about five years to fully implement the provisions in that bill. So we have two tasks ahead of us. One is to analyze what that impact is and, and have that be a, a big part of our ongoing budget discussions relative to how we deliver our essential services, but also how we continue to invest in Madison. And City of Madison is, is not unlike any other community, but even as a community of our size, we have significant investment needs because of infrastructure and, as we talked about earlier today, a 1979, you know, air conditioner on the roof that finally went kaput. But we have lots of roads, sidewalks, streets, parks, facilities, enormous amount of above-ground and below-ground infrastructure that has to be not only, you know, maintained, but in many instances replaced, and the only way to do that is with effective acknowledgement about what those needs are and then putting a plan in place. So as part of the finance committee's discussions leading into the 2026 budget in preparation for our workshop that's coming up in mid-August, I'd like to invite Gary Smith to lead us through a discussion on the legislative overview. Then after that, Mindy and Chris will give a presentation on our street inventory in particular, because on the agenda tonight is ordinance 2025-11, which is the introduction of the ordinance to adopt a municipal motor vehicle excise tax. So with that ado, Gary? Yep?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Gary Smith, REIT Financial Group, the city's financial advisor, and I echo several of the comments Mayor made in regards to Senate Enrolled Act 1 and if changes it's going to have on municipalities across the entire state. So we've got a presentation, it's about, I don't know, 12 or 13 slides long, about some of these key changes, and we'll go through the property tax changes of the new legislation first. So if we could jump to page 3 on the screen, if you would. Can we jump to page 3? Oh, sorry. There we go. So these are some of the assessed value changes that you'll see. The first section's 1% residential properties. So we're shifting away from more of a fixed homestead-style deduction to more of a percentage-based supplemental deduction. And on the following slide, we'll go over exactly what that looks like. But essentially, the impact is net assessed values will fall over time for homeowners as they shift to more of a percentage-based deduction system, and that, like Mayor mentioned, that fully phases in between 2026 and it'll eventually be fully phased in in 2031. So comments on that section specifically, the city's projected to lose about $142 million in total net assessed value under Senate Enrolled Act 1 by the time we get to 2031. The second category is 2%. Those would be properties that are zoned as agricultural or multifamily units. They have a very similar style change coming. They don't currently have a fixed homestead deduction like homesteads do, but they will be rolling on a similar supplemental percentage-based deduction. That's, that'll be brand-new beginning in 2026. So again, same, same concept as the 1% above. We project the city to lose roughly $72 million in net assessed value by 2031, 2032. 3% commercial industrials, there's no change on the real property side, but the change does come from business personal property. So the exemption right now is there's an automatic exemption for any personal property $80,000 and under, that's jumping to $2 million, so quite a significant change there. And then also, any business personal property in the state of Indiana, you know, pre-2026 is subject to depreciation pools, so depending on what type of asset it is, it depreciates at different rates, and those, you know, net of depreciation rates are what's actually taxable. So that floor is being eliminated for new business personal property as well. So, you know, depending on the exposure, will we have business personal property, that could be something that, that affects us as well in, in a meaningful way. For Madison, we project that number to be about 30, 35 million under the new, under the new statute. One of the other main things to be cognizant of is the new residential tax credit. So 1% properties will also receive a tax credit that's up to $300 per year. That is over and above any circuit breaker credits that you would currently receive on your tax bill. It's, it's entirely a new credit altogether, 10% or $300. Dollar-for-dollar loss of revenue as it pertains to the overlapping taxing units, so, you know, Madison, Jefferson County, et cetera. And we have high, relatively high exposure to that here, here in Madison, so something we need to, we need to study as well.
Is that, uh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Is that 1% tax credit up to $300, is that a temporary thing, or is that, is that going to be a permanent?
I believe that's permanent. Is that what you're telling me? That's permanent.
Okay. Thank you.
So factoring all of that in, if we just compared, like, you know, if all these deductions were put online today, which of course it's being phased in, all those deductions would drop your total certified net assessed value across the city by 34% if they were all implemented today. So on the next slide, this is, you know, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but this is, this is what the phasing outs of the homestead deductions look like. So in 2025, all homesteads receive a fixed $48,000 homestead deduction. You'll see, you know, in the ensuing years down to 2030, that is phasing out, and then down at the bottom, you'll see the supplemental deduction as a percentage-based. So in 2026, 40% of gross assessed value is a new percentage-based supplemental deduction, going all the way up to 66.7%, 2031. And then, as I mentioned before, on the right-hand column, the upper-right-hand column, that would be your 2%, so that's your, your multifamily and your agricultural, new percentage-based deductions that will be coming online, that's the schedule that you could expect to see. And then, we talked about the homestead property credits. There's a few other minor changes there, as you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner, property tax changes, the most significant of which is the homestead tax liability, or homestead tax credit that we mentioned before, up to $300. And then the 4% annual growth quotient to your tax levy is remaining intact, so for purposes of planning, our max levy growth quotient, the city can grow its operating tax revenues by, is capped at 4% again for next year. So the next slide is, is, this is kind of more of a speculative slide, but just, you know, kind of some of the things that we're hearing as we, we keep our, our ear to the ground. We do think rate caps are coming, that's some things that we've heard, you know, right now, tax rates just are whatever they need to fund the levy. We do anticipate at some point that could get to a level in which they say $3 is the max, and you live within that. That is very speculative, however, but I just wanted to point that out, that is something that we are starting to see discussed, and that may be where all this goes kind of long-term. So I won't spend too much time on that, but I wanted to mention that. Next slide, please. So this is the net assessed value projections. I like the graphical illustration here, because it really points out what's happening. You'll see the blue line, that is what we project the net assessed values of the City of Madison to do if, if Senate Enrolled Act 1 was not a thing. So if we just look forward to the future under current growth models, that would be the trajectory that we would be on. Upwards to 1.1 billion by 2032, just around 800, 800 million right now. The orange line represents what the projections for that same certified net assessed value looks like with all the deductions that are being phased in, and you can essentially see what's happening is any of our normal growth that we would experience is being completely abated by these phasing ends of these new tax credits. So that's really what we have to manage in '26 and beyond, and as you'll see on the chart there, too, you know, 2026 is not really our problem, it's not when things are really fully impacted. The further we get to 2031, the more and more the changes of this new legislation will be felt. So just wanted to point that out there. The next slide is specific to property tax rates. So assessed values and tax rates have an inverse relationship. If all else being equal, if assessed values fall, tax rates just go up to compensate that difference. So that's essentially what this graphical illustration is showing here. The blue line, which you may not be able to see it very well, but the blue line is what we would expect the certified tax rates to do, again, under that example we showed earlier of the net assessed value growing pre-Senate Enrolled Act 1. So over time, as values eclipse a 4% growth essentially, the tax rate would be projected to go down over time. That is what we would have expected to see pre-Senate Enrolled Act 1. We also have a green line there in the middle. Lots of communities across the state adopt, you know, kind of a rate-neutral policy year over year. They like to establish nights' consistent certifications in their tax rates, as to not have any big surprises in annual tax bills, right? You don't have, you don't have certified rates jumping up and down. So the difference between that green line and the blue line essentially represents the loss of capital funding that's, you know, not captured within the max levy growth quotient or, or circuit breakers, but just lost in revenues in terms of bonding capacity at a tax-neutral rate. So I think that's important to consider over time. You know, the administration council could do nothing differently than what you're doing right now. You could do the exact same thing that you've done in all years past, take your 4% MLGQ. Due to Senate Enrolled Act 1, tax rates will just go up as a result of how this functions. Now, that doesn't mean that rates will affect tax bills necessarily, so there are a lot of new deductions on 1% properties. There is the new homestead tax credit as well that's coming online. So, you know, just because tax rates are fluctuating doesn't necessarily mean, you know, there'll be year-over-year increases in tax bills. It's just tax rates are increasing to, you know, offset the, the lowering of the assessed values. Our next one, please. So this, this next line is really where the impact is, you know, taking into consideration the tax levy and the tax caps, you know, the blue line again is where we would project things to come in with the growth assumptions we went over in prior slides. As far as, you know, tax dollar, you know, spending, net collections that City of Madison would expect to receive, that's the blue line on the graph. The orange line on the graph represents our new collection number because of Senate Enrolled Act 1. So essentially, what you're going to see in the long-term is you're going to see tax rates being pushed up because of these new assessed value deductions, and as more people are pushed more and more above the tax caps, the overall loss in net collections will be greater and greater, and that's what this is illustrating. So that box at the bottom will show in 2026, and this is really the most important thing to go over, is the current system, we could have expected 8.6 million roughly in property taxes, net of circuit breaker, and due to Senate Enrolled Act 1 changes, we're more in line with 8.4 million. So just next year alone, we're looking at about $216,000 loss, and of course, that's not a one-year thing, that's, you know, every year that, that number is getting larger and larger. So you can see by the time we get out to 2032, the year-over-year loss is 437,418, you know, quite a large cumulative loss when you look at that year-over-year.
Yeah, I was going to say cumulatively, it's $3.3 million by the time this is implemented. And so along the way, you know, the state legislature also gave us some new tools to replace that lost revenue that we would have to consider adopting here locally, but $3.3 million is, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of money, taken out of a, what's already a pretty small operating budget that funds police and fire and streets and planning and zoning and all of our general, general fund activities. The cumulative impact is very significant.
Yep. And, you know, communities across the state are all having the same conversation as, as how do we make up for lost revenue? You know, one thing that we haven't discussed yet, and it's on the ensuing slides, is the local income tax changes, so I can touch on that just a little bit as well. So the first slide is Jefferson County Local Income Tax 101. This is just the current rules, and it's got a little bit of information about how, how local income tax rates are set and, you know, what Jefferson County looks like specific to, you know, median and average local income tax rates across the state. So right now, lit rates are set by the county council. That's a county-wide rate, everyone pays the same rate. The expenditure rate cap currently is 2.5%. There's different type of expenditure rates that are within that, but the cap's, you know, 2.5% for the expenditure piece. Certified distributions are based on tax levies relative to all tax levies in county, so that's one of the key things they're changing, is how they're, how they're distributed, but also how they're, how they're assessed. Total lit cap is currently 3.75. Now, that's with some, you know, special, special lit rates included in that, but that's how high you could technically go to in the state of Indiana. And no county currently, currently levies anywhere near the max amount. The highest lit rate currently is Randolph County at 3%. Average lit rate across the state's 1.6%, median lit rate's 1.63%, and then Jefferson County total lit rate currently is 1.03%. So quite a bit below the average and the median lit rate when looking at across the state. And we can talk about, you know, there at the bottom, you'll see how those are distributed out amongst, you know, jail correctional, economic development, public safety, those are your different rates where that, that's comprised of. All that said, and the current rules, how it's established, you know, how it's certified, what the city receives, we get about $2.6 million in revenue under the current local income tax rules. The next slide will go into what's changing, and what's changing is really everything. It's changed, they're changing how it's adopted, they're changing how it's certified, they're changing everything with it. So as I mentioned before, you could go up to 2.5% on expenditure rate, and it's county-wide, and it's set by the fiscal body of the county. Now, they're, they're kind of bifurcating that out amongst all the different units. So in, in the red boxes, we've got opportunities where, where Madison could impose their, their own lit rates. So instead of it being Jefferson County that would impose a rate on everyone, the City of Madison could impose their own rate. So the max rate the city could impose under this new rule would be 1.2%, it'd be set by the fiscal body of the city. It would be, the tax base would be the incorporated boundaries of the City of Madison, whereas now it's the entire county. So that's, that's how it's currently set up. So, you know, figuring out what that rate is to replace the revenue is kind of the key, and we don't have a lot of good data on that. They don't have, you know, lit data or AGI data specific to municipalities yet. So setting what that rate is, is going to be a bit of a challenge, but we know we're projecting all that information right now. So let's think of AGI is going to be your new certified net assessed value going forward. So we'll have to think about things in those terms moving forward. So outside of the up to 1.2% the City of Madison could impose, the county also has the ability to raise a 0.4% lit rate that will be imposed on the entire county, and they would share that fire protection and EMS rate with, you know, fire territories, districts, municipal fire of those within the county. So there is more clarity, I believe, that we need to have on that, because it's drafted kind of loosely, but as of right now, the idea is 0.4% could be assessed county-wide, of which some of that would be shared with the municipalities based on service area.
Okay, that, that's on top of the lit rate the county would also assess for the entire county, but, but their own separate rate in addition to the municipal rate, correct?
Yeah.
So the 1.2 and the 1.4, I'm sorry, the 1.2 and the .4 is what the county council is going to be considering?
Yes, so the county has a lot of power under the current rules now, so all those ones that have asterisks next to them, so county services, fire protection EMS, non-municipal, civil taxing unit, those can go up to 1.7%.
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
I don't understand lit, C, all sorts of abbreviations up there, Mayor.
Okay. Maybe Gary can explain what that is, local income tax.
Yeah.
Local income tax clarification?
Yeah, so local income tax? Which one?
C, lit, you're using a lot of jargon. Top of the thing, C1.
Senate, Senate Enrolled Act 1.
SEA. SEA.
Senate Enrolled Act 1.
Yeah. So it's a new legislation that came down.
I understand what it is, but I don't understand the abbreviation. What's lit mean?
Local income tax.
Okay, thank you.
That's the tax that's assessed on your income if you reside in Jefferson County, regardless of where you work, but if you reside here, you're being assessed that, that local income tax.
So the total rate that they could go up to under the new rules is 2.9%. As I mentioned before, the old number was 3.5%, it's now 2.9%, so the state will tout that as a local income tax decrease, but as we mentioned before, no one's currently at the, at the, at the cap. So, you know, depending on what the county does, what the city does, what happens with fire protection EMS, you know, total lit rates are going to be subject to ongoing discussion over the next few years. This is something we don't need to figure out right away, this is not affect 2026. We're hearing that this will be something that will be established at '27, and then, you know, actually paying it, the collections part will come in 2028, and we anticipate certifications in 2029. So, you know, when we formally shift away from the old rules and start, you know, shifting towards the new certifications, 2029 is, is kind of when that flip's going to get switched.
I believe the, the law states that the municipalities will go through the adoption process in 2027.
Does that 2.9% total rate, does that also include what a city could levy?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's for the, the, all taxing bodies in the county can cumulatively.
No consent, you won't pay more than 2.9%.
Okay.
Yep. So the next slide's really, you know, kind of putting all this together. So we got the current lit rate, 1.03%, which is county-wide. Beginning in 2028, we must establish our own lit rate up to 1.2%. We talked about that. The city's projected to need a lit rate of approximately 1.118% to recoup the losses of Senate Enrolled Act 1, and we got a little bit of math down there below will show where that comes from. There's also interlocal agreement with the county, obviously those, those things will need to be discussed, but where we got, where we came up with that 1.118% number is, we've got those three little bullet points right there. We projected 2,860,000 would be the lit projection for 2028, just based on growth. So that's where we project we would have gone to under the current rules by 2028. So if we, you know, kind of backfilled that rate along with the maximum property tax levy lost due to Senate Enrolled Act 1 of 574,000, we would need just about 3.4 million 2028, 2029, to make the City of Madison whole based on what it's currently funding and what it would project to fund by 2028, 2029, and that's the lit rate it would take to essentially get you there now. So it's 1.118%, like we mentioned. What's the county do? What do the overlapping units do? Those are all conversations, obviously, you know, coming up down the road. That's all I had on lit and property tax. Is there any questions on that? I can cover some changes to the debt levies as well, and I've got Tyler Lewis with my shop also that can discuss the changes from the 1461 legislative changes also. Mayor, how do you want to?
Well, I mean, let's, again, it was very educational, we're trying to, you know, make people aware of these pretty significant changes that have occurred in this last legislative session, and I'll ask Council if they have any questions on the information that Gary's presented, and the timing is good, because it's ahead of when we'll start our workshops in, our workshop, budget workshop for the 2026 year in, in just a few weeks. And then we can follow up later, too, if there's no questions here tonight.
So my overall question is, why is the state doing this? And thank you for going and speaking out against this.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Sorry. So why is the state doing this? And thank you, Mayor, for going and fighting to stop it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's a great question. I mean, there's going to be winners and losers across the state as a result of these changes. In our estimation, high-growth communities will benefit from this, lower-growth communities will not. Communities that are close to the circuit breaker tax credit now will be pushed even further above the circuit breaker threshold, meaning more and more lost dollars the more this gets implemented, as we, as we saw. You know, some communities, that loss is manageable, others, it's absolutely catastrophic. You know, the communities are going to have really tough decisions to make, and communities are going to have to figure out ways to raise revenues or, or cut back in other ways. I can't answer your question as to why this was done, other than, as we briefly mentioned on that speculative slide earlier, this could be a push towards getting everyone to the tax caps over $3 as a total certified net assessed value, or, I'm sorry, to a $3 certified tax rate, to where essentially the max levy growth quotient entirely goes away, and any increase in tax revenues that, you know, cities, towns, counties receive is going to come purely from assessed value growth. So if your assessed value grows, it grows 1%, then you receive 1% more in property tax collections, and if it goes down, then you may receive less in property tax collections. And that's kind of what we're hearing where the long, this, this, the long-term of this is going. And the thought is, you know, they would allow lit to come in to replace some of those lost revenues, but again, it just depends on the community, it depends on where they live, where they pay taxes at, to what extent the community can recoup those losses. There's definitely going to be winners and losers to that.
And I would just add to that, if I may, that this reflects a different ideology. As he was talking about earlier, a lot of the property tax levy and calculations were based upon a tax rate instead of what the actual levy amount was, and so, you know, the, the discussion that was happening during the legislative session, and particularly, you know, with Governor Braun, is that there were some units of government taking advantage of property owners as these assessed values were increasing, and we were all striving, not we, but particularly school systems were, were identified as, you know, big utilizers of this process, they would manage to a tax rate which actually had the effect of, in some communities, not ours, because we have a very stable property values and assessments, but in some faster-growing communities, those assessments were rising in double digits and causing a lot of burden on the property tax owner. And so the ideology with Governor Braun is to flatten out the growth in the property tax levies, which then will have a different impact on the rate and make them honestly a little less consequential than the actual dollar amounts that a property owner would be paying, and then shift that burden over to other taxpayers. And in the instance here, you'll see that a lot of the shifting is moving from someone who owns property to someone who's paying income taxes, and the benefit And the benefit is distributed between those property owners and those, essentially, you know, the corporations who are investing a lot in manufacturing equipment and getting, you know, large deductions for the acquisition of the, of the equipment. The, the other overriding ideology here is that, and I've said this several times along the way, the intention here is to essentially drive, drive revenue to communities and have them be more cost conscious about the delivery of the services and the cost of those services, but also spread that burden across different, different groups. And, and that's why it really plays into the conversation we have all the time about how do we grow our community and expand our, our tax base. They did give local governments alternatives. Rather than tax reductions, they said, the state is no longer going to come in and replace that revenue for you. What you're going to have to do is raise it from the community. And there, another big theme here is that the community has to share in a greater burden than it has in the past of the investments in its community and what it costs to deliver its essential services. So a lot of these cuts are coming down from the federal government to the state government. And now we're feeling it at the local government. It is a Titanic shift from top to the bottom. What's happened in DC is affecting the State House, and then now it's here on Main Street. And none of us are immune to it. It's, it's, it's dramatic across all levels of units of government. So the balance we have to do is how do we figure out how to continue to deliver those exceptional services that everybody wants, and also make those critical investments in our infrastructure that are not luxuries, but they're necessities. And that's why we're educating, we're very analytical about it, and we're going to be very intentional about our planning. But this is a really good preview into, when we get into the budget discussions, we got to figure out what can we live without, and what can't we live without, and how, figure out a way to, to do, we have to do both all the time. There, this isn't a binary decision where we just, fine, let's just start cutting a half a million dollars out of our budget every single year. It, it, the cumulative impact is too dramatic on a community like ours. But there is a shifting, and you, I think, I think we've been very transparent across the discussions with the legislation. This isn't a savings to taxpayers. It's essentially tripling the burden. So what you may save 200 or 300 on your property taxes, the end result is going to be, you know, 7, 8, 900 to $1,000 increase in other taxes to replace that lost revenue at, at the local revenue, at the local level. So it's not an easy discussion. Nobody wants to have this discussion. We're identifying a problem. We're bringing solutions. Don't shoot the messengers. We're problem solvers first and foremost, and we're going to continue to figure this out. But we have to figure it out together and make these decisions with good information. That's my two cents on how it all transpired across. Nobody's, you know, everybody, everybody across the state is having these exact same conversations right now.
So Madison and Jefferson County, what category do we fit in? Slow growing, or is there a certain?
I mean, I would have to compare you to your peers. You know, we see growth anywhere from communities that are, you know, stagnant going backwards, all the way up to Donut Counties that are growing, you know, you know, 10 to 15% per year. I think your, I have it in here, I think. Yeah, so we have your properties growing at, on average, based on 21 to 25 data, roughly 4.5% is what your average is. And then, and, and 5.8% for your 1% properties.
What page is that?
Uh, that's on page six.
Okay.
I didn't go over that necessarily. But that's in the footnotes there on the left hand side where that's your, that's your average growth.
So what's that considered?
Uh, I wouldn't say that's average. I mean, if your, if your net assessed value growth under the current rules are keeping up with your 4% max levy growth quotient, your tax rates are staying the same. Your circuit breaker loss isn't getting worse. That's a good place to be, which is where Madison has been historically. Now that all these new changes are rolling on, you could still grow your gross assessed values at the same rates, but these new deductions completely abate that and neutralize it. So now circuit breaker starts to become a problem. So, you know, we were working with another client just the other day, and the break even for them was, I think they had to, they had to grow like 8.6% of their gross assessment year over year, just to, just to keep where they are. So if communities that are like, we have a lot of capital needs that we need to fund, how do we fund those? Where we have all this great growth, and it's like, well, yeah, but it's all going away from these new deductions also. You may be able to issue capital bonds, this community that I'm referring to in 26, but as, as these deductions roll on, that, that now becomes a tax burden in future years. So they're having all those conversations. So I think where you, where you were was a good place to be because you were outpacing that 4% MLGQ, neutralizing your tax rates over all year over year.
Where we were.
Right.
But not where we're headed with what the state is imposing.
Right. So that's, I think it was slide, maybe if I can find it. Maybe, yeah, tax rates. So page seven, if you go to page seven, please. So the blue line on, on what I'm describing is, was, is kind of where you are now. All things being equal, the orange line is where you'll go. If, if growth trends historically keep the same. And the reason I said you, you were in good shape before is that blue line at the bottom was staying very consistent. When assessments aren't keeping up with the growth quotient of the max levy, then, then our rates start to go up. So that's truly kind of like a teeter totter. As assessed values go down, the rates have to go up to compensate the same tax levy. And that's what that's showing over, over time.
And I'll just make one other comment too, just to put some context with, with it. You've been really, you know, careful about keeping our budget as flat as possible over the course of the last four years. Our average annual increase has been about 1.85%. Which is far below inflation. Now, now with these projections that Gary was showing, I think it's even on the next page with the levy. So remember, we've slightly increased about 1.85%. Now we're going to get into territory where we're having 5 to 6% annual decreases in this revenue up until it's fully implemented in 20, and we only go to 2032 here. And that's going to be significant. It's really, really difficult to make up that type of ground, which is why we have to explore all those other revenue generating options, because that type of, of economic impact over that long period of time, and continues beyond 2032, is just unsustainable. So you have to replace the revenue to continue to provide your, your essential services and make appropriate investments in the community.
Because basically revenues are going down and tax rates are going to go, are going to go up.
Yeah. And, and again, I'll keep coming back. That's why the part of the solution is expanding that tax base. And, and that is about having growth oriented strategies that generate more revenue.
So we're looking for a real long-term solution. Yeah.
That's why growth in 3% commercial, like even, even now more than ever, they're, outside of business personal property, they're exempt from all of these changes and percentage based deductions. So a lot of communities are having the same conversation.
And what he's referring to is the commercial industrial properties. That's the 3%. And the other thing you didn't mention, but even on the, the 2% property, the other impact was on agriculture. They got a higher cap rate that they're using and actually calculating their assessed value. So there was a bit of a double benefit in the 2% categories that's going to have a benefit to the ag property owner, and then more lost levy revenue for the taxing districts.
Yep.
Any other questions for Gary?
No, just, I mean, as I look at your numbers of your projections, of course, we don't know exactly how accurate, but somewhat, you know, next year, we're going to lose in our budget $216,000. In 2027, we're going to lose half a million dollars, 559, and it just continues to grow. In 2028, we'll lose $575,000. That's really scary for small towns.
Well, and not to, you know, again, part of the topic tonight was about the adopting the, the wheel tax funding. But while this is also happening, the grants are getting smaller, right? So that's also another way that the city has functioned in the past, which is you combine all these resources together in order to do your projects. But here you have declining revenue and declining grants, which is going to make it more challenging, again, to continue to, in the context of road maintenance and repair, even more difficult. It's the, kind of the double, double effect.
And kind of the lifeline is the income tax shift, but that's not immediate, right? It's, it's, you know, 2028, 2029. And it's just a, it's just a shift, you know, it's like, you'll see a temporary decrease in, in tax bills now, and then down the road, it gets addressed in other ways, you know, to be determined how and to what extent. But it is, it's like you mentioned before, it'd ultimately be a shift in the long term. Any other questions?
Thank you, Gary. And I know, yeah, go ahead. Yep, he's got one slide. 1461?
Yeah, House Bill 1461, page 12. Just one slide. There's a lot of information circling about this bill that's a little confusing, so hopefully I can clarify that for you. But, so, CCMG grant matches. The one change it did make on that is cities under 10,000 population now only have a...
Do you define that for people?
Yes, it's Community Crossings Matching Grant. So Madison, for example, this year it's 1.5 million. So if Madison puts up 1.5 million, the state will give Madison 1.5 million in road funding. So that doesn't change for Madison, you still stay at 50%. With this new bill, they're limiting the first $100 million in the Indiana State Road and Street Fund to CCMG. So you're likely to see that 1.5 million go down, as Mayor mentioned earlier. We don't know what that amount's going to be yet, but you're likely to see that amount go down. And there's going to be some other distributions after that 100 million. So you'll have 20 million to railroad, 50 million to Indianapolis, and I think 20 more million to somewhere else. And after all that money is dispersed, they'll have some money left over in that state fund. And that money will be distributed based on lane mileage if you have a wheel tax.
Right.
So the units that do not have a wheel tax will not receive any of those dollars. So as I mentioned, CCMG match, it's going to remain at 50%, but you'll see the, the amount from the state go down. One other change that they made defines responsibilities for bridge work. So county is responsible for bridges greater than 20 feet in length. And municipalities are responsible for bridges located within the corporate limits and less than 20 feet in length. Townships, they're now required to impose a road and infrastructure fund. And so at the end of the year, if they have any unrestricted funds, which is, which are funds that are not obligated by their ensuing year budget or in their capital plan, they have to move 30% of those dollars into that fund. And then they'll have to enter into a MOU, a memorandum with the county, the city, to use those dollars for road funding. The only caveat to that is the township has to approve that work if you do work with them. And it has to be obviously within the township boundaries that you're working with. I think that's it. The, it did allow the potential tolling of interstates, but that's a side note. Any questions?
No, just that in the past, our Community Crossings Grant Match Fund has been between 200 and 300 million dollars a year.
Yeah.
And now it's dropping to 100. Is that true?
Well, it'll actually be, it'll be more than that, but they're limiting the first 100 million to this, the grant.
Okay.
They're going to have more money, but it'll go to Indianapolis and other.
Right, like we can't get to it. That's my point. We've had access to a great big pot now for a number of years.
Correct.
And now they've reduced that pot that we can access 50%. And then they're baking another little pot. But oh, to get into this little pot over here, you have to be enforcing a wheel tax in your, okay, I want to make sure I understand that.
That's correct. And so they do project to have money in that fund after CCMG and money to Indianapolis. But how much is Madison going to receive if they impose a wheel tax? I'm not, nobody's sure about that yet.
Right.
So, but the only way that you can access it is to have a wheel tax.
Okay.
So, so a couple of points on that. Tyler, what he just said is the only way to access that pool of funds is if you're a community that has adopted the wheel tax. So the, the unknown so far is how many communities will do that. And I can tell you, there's a rush now of communities doing it because this has been forecasted to us. This, the, our legislators started telling us this was going to happen last year. If you don't have a wheel tax, be prepared. And then, and then as Tyler said, how much money's left over after the tranches? And the other, the other thing too is what's your proportional share of lane miles relative to the total share of lane miles of those communities that have adopted a wheel tax that are eligible to receive funding out of that pool? So there's still more data to gather, but, you know, one thing is an absolute, which is your percentage of funding out of that pool, if you're a community that hasn't adopted the wheel tax is zero.
What's that timeline?
August 31st.
Yeah.
So after that...
To, to be implemented, so for January 1st, 2026.
So if we don't have that wheel tax by August 31st, then we stand to lose money.
You miss out on...
Grant money from the state.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's the most important thing to take away from all of this, is that Indianapolis, in their attempt to appease the political headwinds that came on this year, they have made all of these cuts. So they can sit in Indianapolis on their multi-billion dollar surpluses and say, look at us, look what we did, we've cut your taxes, when really they're kicking the can down the road and they're holding local governments hostage to begin imposing all these ticky tacky little taxes that have to be spread out. Because if we don't, like the wheel tax specifically, if we don't impose this wheel tax, we lose access to the only source of funding that we really have to realistically come close to meeting our infrastructure, road and road needs, paving needs.
Right. I don't, I don't want a wheel tax, but also I don't want to miss out on state funds.
Right.
So either way.
And we stand to lose more by not adopting the wheel tax than we would, just because of the amount of money that comes in on these, these road grants.
And we being the taxpayers.
I, I think all over the state, you'll see kind of a rush of wheel tax. Cities and towns and counties implementing a wheel tax.
Right. And the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program has been hugely successful, and it has treated rural communities on par with larger communities. That was the beauty about it. And Policy Analytics did a presentation to the Indiana Conference of Mayors probably a year, two years ago, where they were talking about this very thing, about changing the road funding formula, because communities like Indianapolis have much more traffic, more lane miles, and they're getting the same amount of funding annually as Madison, Indiana is. And they didn't like that. And so you'll see in this bill, Indianapolis, Indianapolis gets its own earmark of 50 million dollars. Now, they have to match it with 50 million, but now they potentially are getting 100 million dollars of roadwork done each year. And now what we're trying to do is, you know, cobble together a half a million dollars that, to do, to do that. But downtown and the Hilltop have all benefited greatly with our Community Crossing Grant Program. And, you know, we're kicking off this year our Main Street reconstruction with Community Crossing Matching Grant Funds from Broadway to Mill Street. We've done the subdivisions on the Hilltop, West Street, all over town, Mulberry Street. I mean, that has been our primary source of, of replacing this very, these are very expensive roads.
I do have one more point that I think is important for you guys to know. If the county also imposes a wheel tax, you get a distribution from the county as well. So you would get the distribution from the county and also from... So you would get the distribution from the county and also from Madison if you imposed one.
Yep. You know, again, continuing with the education and the topic of tonight, I'd like to introduce, Chris Hale and Mindy McGee are going to give a presentation on our actual street inventory. Again, more data, more analytics relative to that portfolio and the importance of the topic tonight.
Yeah, so good evening, members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. Mindy and I were asked to put together some data for you describing the current condition of our roadways and our asset management plan for those roadways. So Mindy worked hard on putting it together. I'll do my best to represent it well here, and we'll pull her in if I get too deep, right? So the first thing is, we'd like to cover what is an asset management plan, right? So it's basically a, and you'll hear us refer to it going forward, you'll hear us refer to a Pacer Rating. So a Pacer Rating stands for Pavement Surface Evaluations and Rating, right? So it's basically just a rating for the condition of our roadways. So every road surface within the city limits has been rated anywhere between a 1 and a 10, 10 being a newly paved surface, and a 1 being a fully failed surface, right? We are required to annually do this in order to meet road funding opportunities and requirements. We also have a, what's called a five-year road treatment summary. So those are meant to have a variety of treatment options for roads that are not fully deteriorated and to manage that asset as we move along. Some of those treatments include, you're probably familiar with crack filling and sealing, rejuvenators. As you get further into it, you have partial mills and overlays, and then you have full depth reclamation with asphalt, right? So as we talk a little further, that'll become clearer. So on this slide here, the main thing you'll notice, an 8 to 10 is a considered a good Pacer Rating, 5 to 7, fair, and 1 to 5, poor. So some of the key points from these slides here, and the graph does a pretty good job of showing it, is our largest section of roadway by mileage is rated at a 3, and it's 18.5 miles, right? Which is approximately 28% of our current roadways. So for, as we discussed remediation and options earlier, so for a 6 or higher, your options are going to be pothole repair, crack sealing, seal coating, and patching as needed. For a 5 or lower, it's going to mostly require some sort of mill and pave. So those are the assumptions that were made as we went forward to manage the asset portfolio. So as you, as you can see here, this chart kind of groups them. The largest group being fair to poor, which is the ratings of 1 through 5, and makes up 54% of our current portfolio. We have 28% of the roads in good, and 18% in what we would call very good to excellent, mostly new roadway. That 54% of the 1 to 5 is, as we just mentioned before, the roadways that are going to need some sort of mill and pave or an overlay, right? They are not, not able to be remediated by your normal crack filling and sealing, or the life is not able to be extended at that point, right? The road has deteriorated too much. Okay, so main takeaways from this one, this slide here, are going to be that the total estimated cost to get our Pacer Ratings of a 1 through 5 up to where they need to be is just under $9 million, right? So of that 9 million, you can see 3s and 4s make up approximately 8 million of that total value. The 1s and 2s, the worst roads, have already started to have been tackled before I ever started here. So that's why you won't see a large portion of our roads in that 1 and 2 category, right? So those, those have started to be addressed with repaves. The, the 3s and the 4s are where we really struggle and where we need to get those before they become a 1 and a 2, right? So that some of them will potentially be eligible for, say, a partial mill and pave versus a complete resurface. So it's a, it's a large number, obviously. It, it's something that is going to scare everybody when they see it, but we're trying to bring some reality to this discussion, right? So just for some perspective, when we talk about the annual revenue from a proposed wheel tax, based on some of the data gathered, right? You're talking about a total annual revenue of combined passenger vehicles and large vehicles of approximately $280,000. So this is not something that's going to generate millions of dollars at a time. But what that can be, 100% of that revenue can be used to construct or reconstruct roadways and streets here in the city, and that can be leveraged to then be paired and put towards CCMG grants, whatever part of that is available, right? The 100 million plus if we institute the wheel tax, whatever is left over available in the excess pot. So lastly, we've, we've covered some of this, and the reading presentation covered some of it. The legislative, legislative, legislative changes have reduced the CCMG pool available to us, right, to the 100 million dollars, plus whatever is in the excess should we implement the tax. If we do not, it will be reduced simply to the 100 million dollar pool. There is no guarantee of award for CCMG projects going forward. It's, it's going to be a more competitive system with emphasis for projects with the greatest regional significance, and that will be determined by NDOT, obviously. So we'll have less control over, over those decisions, right? And as we said before, all local governments will compete for the 100 million dollar. So that was the extent of our presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions or answer any concerns.
I would just, on this slide, emphasize that last point, which is, you know, what are we going to ask council to approve when we do the budget? And it's a capital plan that, again, we're trying to be conservative on this, but we have a significant portion of our road inventory that needs upgraded and at a cost of over $9 million, and that doesn't include other structures that we have, such as parking lots, for example, that will, and alleys that will have to be addressed. And our goal is to do a million dollar per year investment, and that would come from a combination of proceeds derived with the wheel tax, as he had mentioned. Combine that with monies from our operating budget as we go through and find those sources, and then that becomes our match for CCMG. And there's still some uncertainty as to how much that CCMG is going to be, but it's also self-limiting from the standpoint of how much our match is. It, it's 50%, which sounds like it's, you get, you know, do double your money, but it's still dollar for dollar. So if we can, our goal is to assemble $500,000 a year, make us eligible for $500,000 CCMG funding from either of those pools, and, and have a methodical plan to actually deal with these poorly rated roads. This is outside of Main Street Master Plan. That has its own plan and funding sources for what we've approved so far, which is from Broadway to the top of Hanover Hill. Over the course of the next three years, we'll be, we'll be putting together the final part of the Main Street Master Plan, which is the Central Business District, which is the most difficult, complicated, and expensive part, and that's from Broadway to Jefferson Street. So as we, as we laid out our master plan earlier, we're going to tackle 75% of that project and have it done by the end of 2027. Over the course of the, from the time the agreement with NDOT was made in 2014, to the time this, to the, you get to Jefferson Street, we're probably talking 15 years of working on Main Street. So it's just more food for thought. You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, that, that's a, ends the educational part of it. We still have a presentation, another presentation from Economic Development, Emily McKinney, on the Riverfront District Liquor License Renewal, and then we'll move into the actual resolution and bills for tonight.
Good evening, council. You have before you Vintage Lanes, their annual liquor license renewal. Before I went into them, I just wanted to give you a quick, brief synopsis of the program again. In 2022, you guys passed a resolution that gave you the ability to grant up to 10 liquor licenses, with up to three of them being designated for cultural experience venues. All three of those are currently taken by the Ohio Theater, Red Bicycle Hall, and Vintage Lanes. We have three restaurants that are currently occupying three of the restaurants, and that's River Oak Chop House, Rivertown Grill, and Red on Main. So the four licenses we still have available are all for the restaurant category. So that's just where that program overall stands. So then you have in your packet Vintage Lanes, their renewal materials, and that has all been reviewed by the Economic and Redevelopment Department and the mayor's office, and we are recommending to you that you approve their annual renewal.
I would move that we approve their...
Turn your mic on, Jim.
I would, I would move that we approve their annual application.
I'll second the motion.
Anything from the audience? Okay, seeing, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Patrick Tebano?
Yes.
Carla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Atillo?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Stortman's absent. Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
Joshua Bird's absent.
That passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Emily, you may as well stay there, because we'll roll into tonight's business, and I'll ask Joe to go through the resolution and bills.
Yep. The next thing that is on the agenda is Resolution Number 2025-11C, and this is a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, amending the 2022-39C Resolution Regarding Riverfront Liquor Licenses. Do you want to hit the highlights?
Yeah, I'll hit the highlights, and they're, they're pretty minimal. So I just referenced, so in 2022, all of the current guidelines that we follow were established for this program. And so we continue to have renewed interest in the cultural experience venue category, but as I just said, all three of those are taken. And so we're proposing creating another category out of that, that is the small experience venue category, that would put that at a maximum capacity of 75 people, whereas we would then, the one we currently have, just make it a large one, because it has a minimum capacity of 125 people. So we're basically just breaking that apart to then give us the opportunity to have two more licenses. So that's part of what the amendment to the resolution is, we're just adding 12, or we're adding two, giving us the total ability to grant 12. And so the only real change in that is saying up to two of those can be granted for the small cultural experience venue. And there's nothing in the exhibits, the map is not changing in Exhibit A at all, and then the only edit for Exhibit B is the number 7, which is basically just adding the definition for the small cultural experience venue, which just says the 75 people is the maximum, and it follows the same rules as the cultural experience venue is currently following.
So do we have a motion to approve 2025-11C?
I have a question.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and get a...
I, I move we approve Resolution 2025-11C.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Okay.
So once again, the definition of small versus large is...
The small will have a maximum capacity of 75 people, whereas the large, which are the three that are currently out in the market, is a minimum of 125 people.
So what happens to the locations that are between 75 and 125?
I guess that's to be determined, because we're...
Well, they wouldn't be eligible, they wouldn't be eligible for either one of these licenses, so it's, again, this is trying to, dealing with kind, I would call it kind of more boutique venues to expand options here in the community without, you know, needing large capacity spaces for them. The other, the other option would be to just scrap the size limit altogether and put them all in one category, if you wanted to do that. It's another option.
I think that, to me, that sounds like a better idea. It removes excess red tape and...
And it takes you, kind of addresses your point, which is what's in between.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little more, levels the playing field for those sorts of establishments, and all these licenses still have to be approved by the council anyway, so...
Make a motion for amendment?
I would move that we amend Resolution 2025-11C to combine on Exhibit B, Section 6 and 7, and remove the minimum and maximum performance capacities.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Just walk through, make sure we understand what that motion is. Is it, is your motion to essentially just increase the number of licenses for cultural experiences?
Yes, it would, it would, it would leave that the same as proposed, and it would, on the, the cultural experience licenses criteria on Exhibit B, it would consolidate Section 6 and 7 and remove any reference to minimum and maximum performance capacities.
So aren't we really just leaving, we take out number 7, and then just say, just change the wording from minimum to maximum?
I think, I think what he's saying is, you would not have a minimum or maximum in the cultural experience venue, and you would go from, how many licenses do we have there now?
Three.
Three to five.
Yes.
Did I get that right?
Yeah.
So the most, just clarify, the motion would be to remove the minimum or and maximum capacities and increase the cultural experience licenses from three to five.
Correct.
And we, and Carla, you seconded that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the amendment? Anything from the audience? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, that amendment passes. So now I think we're back to, we've got a motion and a second on the floor for 2025-11C. Is there any other comment or discussion as it pertains to that from either the council or the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we have a roll call vote.
Sure. Patrick Tebano?
Yes.
Carla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Atillo?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
And Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
Emily, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
All right, and next on the agenda is 2025-11, 2025-11. It is an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, imposing a municipal motor vehicle license excise surtax and municipal wheel tax. I think we've kind of hit the high...
I would, I would just, we've already kind of talked about why this is necessary, but it may be worthwhile to go through which vehicles are actually subject to this. And one way to frame it up is passenger vehicles and small trailers are the, at the $25 annual rate, and buses, recreational vehicles, semi-trailers, and, and trailers with gross weights above 9,000 pounds, and trucks with a gross weight above 11,000 pounds would be subject to the wheel tax at $40. And then the presentation that Chris went through earlier, we had a little over 10,000 vehicles that would be subject to the $25 tax, and a little over 400 that would be subject to the $400 tax, or $40, $40 tax.
So this is, this is on first reading, so I'm still getting used to this, I don't know why. But, so it's open for discussion. Council, do you have anything else you'd like to ask about or talk about as it pertains to this ordinance?
So quick question, just for the record, we kind of discussed it earlier. So, quick question, just for the record, we kind of discussed it earlier, but golf cart type vehicles that have state license plates, are they considered passenger vehicles, recreational vehicles, or are they exempt from this?
I probably need to do a little bit of research to determine that. However, I would think that if you receive a plate, then you are considered a passenger vehicle, and thus you would be subject to, to this.
I did notice many trucks are on the list, which I think is the category those have been squeezing into in order to get a plate, right?
Uh, I mean, I think they actually have their own category called a low-speed vehicle. And so, I mean, I can check and see and get you a definite answer, but I would, my gut is that they would qualify as a passenger vehicle.
The questions from the podium, we'll get there, man, just a second.
Josh, did you have something?
No. I was saying, I agree with you, Joe. I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the council or comments on this as it pertains to this ordinance?
I think what we all, what we said earlier, Lucy, too, it's not something we want to do, but what we stand to lose as a community here, based on what Indianapolis is dictating to us here, we don't really have a way around it.
All right, I think we'll open it up for the floor from, from the audience.
Thank you, Chris. If there's someone here who'd like to make a statement to the mayor's office or council, please come to the podium, name and address, please, and make your statement.
Robert Lofton, live at 313 Hendrick Street, Madison. Who's going to impose this wheel tax? Is that going to go through the state license branch?
Yeah, I believe it's collected through the BMV.
Okay. What about these out-of-towners that come in, are they going to pay tax? For your Chicagoa, for your races, for sightseeing?
Sir, the tax would be subject to those vehicles that are licensed in Madison, and assessed and collected by the BMV, and distributed to the city. So there are plenty of roads that come through Madison that have different drivers on them.
I understand that.
And if they're not registered here in the city of Madison, they wouldn't be paying a state of Indiana municipal wheel tax.
I don't understand why the city of Madison is being punished for your roads when, just like up there on 62, I'd real, I think the state's taking care of that problem between Clifty Falls and Highway seven. They're grinding it up, going to resurface. What was wrong with that damn road to begin with? There wasn't nothing wrong with it. But I don't, I'm not dealing in politics. All I know is I've seen them before, county, city, state, they'll go in and they'll grind up a road, and there ain't nothing wrong with it. Then you've got a road over here that's full of potholes and cracks and whatever, it just beats you to death, but they don't fix that. How do they determine who's going to fix what?
The city of Madison is responsible for the streets and roads within its jurisdiction. Roads you're referring to, like Clifty Drive, that's a state highway, we have three state highways intersecting through Madison and different counties.
That's an example, but the city does the same thing. The county does the same thing.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, the city and the county, what do you mean by that, sir?
Well, what I'm talking about is you take a perfectly good road, next thing you know, they're resurfacing it. Why? There ain't no chuckles in it, the pavement ain't breaking off the edges. It's a perfectly good road, and they go back and repave it instead of paving roads that need to be paved.
Could you give us an example of a perfectly paved road in the Madison city limits that was stripped and redone that didn't need to be done?
I can't offhand, but what's the road that goes in front of the post office?
Lanier.
Lanier. They stripped that off and repaved it, and then the city come along, or the water department come along and dug holes in it.
How many years ago was that? Was that recent?
That was, I'd say, within the last two or three years.
That's also a state highway, if I'm not mistaken.
That's a state highway, and, you know, you're, I think the point you're making is the roads get a lot of beating, and not only from the traffic, but all the underground work. And I'll tell you, that was an important initiative of ours a couple of years ago. We adopted a new excavation policy because of the damage happening to our roads with below-surface excavations from contractors and utility work. So we have improved that a lot. I just made an announcement on that recently where we're, you know, systematically going across the city and repairing those old cuts, but also preparing for the future and doing a lot of subsurface work when we're doing a major road initiative like on Main Street. And we're about out of time, Mr. Loftus, I wish there was, we can't deal with what the county does or what the state does on their roads?
I'm just using that as an example.
And I can tell you here, and Councilman May is here, Jefferson County and City of Madison, we have enormous road inventory, and we all do our best to maintain it, and we just have a lot of work ahead of us.
Okay, I ask about the revenue?
Yes, sir.
When you get your revenue from property taxes, correct?
Excuse me?
You get your, your revenue from property taxes?
Well, actually, only about 40% of our annual budget comes from property taxes. So there's a variety of sources of revenue, but we do receive revenue.
When you get that money, do you all invest it? He was saying that they get 4%. I'm getting 7% from my accounts.
Yeah.
I get 4% from the bank on a savings account. Back, back when Daniels was still governor up there, they wanted to cut property taxes. They asked me what I thought about it. I think you're crazy. Somewhere down the line, you're going to need that money.
Yeah.
It's going to be a dry hole. If you take that money that you don't nearly need and save it, but it seems like government, corporations, whatever, they don't want to save the money. If I got the money, I got to spend it. I don't understand that. Hell, I had to save money when I was working and growing up in order to have something when, okay, the water heater blowed out, well, I got money saved for that.
Yeah.
That's why I don't understand what you all doing with money. Back years ago, you all had a surplus, correct?
I can tell you, since I've been mayor, we have been playing catch-up for just about every part of our city. I appreciate your comments. I know other people probably want to make some comments too, Mr. Loftus. Thank you.
Shelley Murphy Smith, 418 East Second Street. I just have a couple of questions. So I understand the need for a wheel tax because of the cuts in our budget. My question is, if there's a city wheel tax, and we are imposed to that, and then the county comes in and puts a wheel tax, are we paying double? Because we're paying as a city member and a county member, because we're both, we're residents of both. So then residents of the city are getting double wheel taxed. That's my first question, is that what's going to happen?
Well, the city's definitely not getting double wheel tax.
Like, if we pay it for the city, we won't have to pay one for the county?
No, I'm not saying that. There's the Jefferson County, and there's the city of Madison.
So the people...
And I think what was discussed earlier was, and I think, I believe that, again, I don't know what the county's going to do.
Yeah.
But if they do adopt a wheel tax, then it would be, just like property taxes, the city of Madison resident pays every property tax there is in Jefferson County. The city of Madison, Jefferson County, Madison Township, the library, right, they pay it all, all the freight.
Yeah.
Lands in the city of Madison, because we're the city of Madison, and we're in Jefferson County.
Yeah.
But if you're Madison Township, you're not in the city of Madison.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yes, I believe, my belief is, if there were, if they assess a wheel tax, then the city of Madison would have to pay for it. I don't know exactly what the formula is, but a portion of that, as I'm told, of what's collected on the county tax gets distributed to the city. I don't know if it's based on population or lane miles, maybe a combination of both. I don't know what that is, and we don't know what Jefferson County's plans are.
Yeah, so, so not necessarily that you would pay both.
Well, if both, if each unit of government...
Let's say they imposed it, let's say they imposed one.
If they impose one, then the city of Madison resident would be subjected to both.
Yes.
Okay.
But if you're in Jefferson County, if you're in Jefferson County, you don't pay the city of Madison, but guess what? You're using Madison roads. So again, we're all talking about, you know, there's no, there's no scientific way, other than a toll road, which we don't have any.
Yeah.
For, for the user of the road to pay for using the road at that moment.
So that's...
Unfortunately, that's, we have to do it.
Yeah, so that's where I kind of am looking at a couple of things with this wheel tax, is that, you know, as a city resident, you're getting double, if they do that, you're going to be doubly taxed, which is kind of really not fair. The other thing I see with it is that if you are a homeowner that has more than one vehicle, because maybe you have a classic car that you don't ever hardly drive, you're going to get taxed on all those vehicles, even though only one of your vehicles is using the road and causing wear and tear at a time. So to me, it feels like people that have more than one vehicle, you can't drive more than one, you should have like a licensed driver tax, like, in a way, because then everybody's kind of equitable. And businesses, another way to raise money, a lot of the wear and tear is from semis that come in and deliver. I mean, is there a way to put some kind of a tax on businesses that have to use semis constantly to bring in things?
So the state construct of the state law says this is how much you can charge on this type of vehicle.
Yeah.
And you can't do anything different than that unless the state law changes. And so that's one reason why there's a differential between passenger vehicles and heavier trucks. There's $25 here and $40 there. And then just from a policy development, I'll keep bringing it back to that, you know, the state highway system is designed for heavy truck traffic.
Yeah.
The cities, local roads and streets aren't.
I know, that's why I'm bringing up the people that bring them in.
But we have significant, but we have significant damage to our roads because of decades of heavy truck traffic. And when I say heavy, it's four times our weight limit coming up and down Main Street.
Oh, I see the semis all the time, that's why.
We've reduced them probably by 90%, but they're still there, and they're not, they're not completely banned because local deliveries are still allowed.
Yeah.
But there, again, there's not a scientific way to just get the specific user, but we are doing what the state law allows.
Yeah, because I think it would be interesting for that if there was a way to get some revenue from those vehicles that are coming in and are not going to be imposed on that tax because they're not residents, but they are the ones that are every day, every week coming in, some of them twice a week.
Shelley, I'll just make this other point.
Yeah.
And that is, those businesses are generally paying a higher property tax rate, you know?
So.
So I would just throw that out there, that there's a lot of factors, and even though we're talking about cars or trucks, there's other things that we've, we've talked about earlier, too, about property taxes.
Yeah.
A business like commercial property may pay three times more property taxes as an individual homeowner, and then slightly more, or in some instances, equal wheel tax as a passenger vehicle.
Okay.
So it's a nuance, but state law designs the construct.
Yeah, and then one other question, and this is another thing you might not be able to do then, you know, going back to that we have a lot of tourism, we do have a lot of people coming in or use our roads, you can't do anything about that, but we've talked about the Airbnbs, how many we have, there's 120 something, I think. Yeah, that's it. Is there anything that we can impose on them as like a fee, because those people that are coming, because they're not paying a lot of this stuff that we have to pay as residents, but they're getting the benefit of it? Is there any kind of way...
They're paying more.
Are they taxed more as an Airbnb resident?
An Airbnb pays double the property taxes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
That a single-family home does.
That's good to know, because I didn't know.
And they also pay an 8% inkeeper tax for, for each night, you know, there's lodging there, and so...
Can we pull any of that into the wheel tax base, like, to give us some more income to put and invest?
That revenue doesn't come to the city, it goes to the Jefferson County Board of Tourism, and then it is distributed for the benefit of the city and the county in the form of grants and other types of investments in city and county infrastructure and tourism that generates sales taxes, supports our jobs, our local economy, and that part of our economy is worth about $60 million a year. It's not inconsequential.
But it's not going towards roads, okay. I'm just trying to figure out how we can raise more revenue for a wheel tax without...
Growing our, growing our population.
Well, we've grown our, yeah, but I'm just kind of wondering about, you know, that's the kind of thing, like, it's, it seems like if he has five vehicles, but he's only driving one at a time, it seems crazy that he's paying a wheel tax for the wear and tear when only one vehicle's using a road. It's not like he can drive all five at the same time. That's where I guess I get from there. So people who are collectors or people who buy vehicles, and that's their livelihood, they buy them to fix, they're paying a tax on it, again, so I'm just kind of wondering...
There are some exemptions under that, I just don't know what they are. What we presented tonight was information we got directly from BMV of the vehicles that were registered in the city of Madison.
Yeah, and so if, one last thing, because this is one to clarify for people. If your vehicles, I know some vehicles, you go in to get a license, you can license it as a car or a truck, some things, some things fall in that category. So are they going by how you licensed it? So like, if you go in and you license, your vehicle is, small SUVs are a good example, small SUVs can be licensed as a car, or they can be licensed as a truck. Do they go by what you've licensed it as for the tax?
There's a state code that defines what type of vehicle it is, and then in this ordinance that is also consistent with state code, it defines which vehicles under those definitions are subject to which level of wheel tax.
Okay, I just kind of want to clarify some of that, because, you know, I'm, you know, people are looking at, they might have two taxes, because I'm sure the county will oppose it. If they're going to lose out on money, they're going to want to do the same thing, so that means people in the local area that are in city limits are probably going to be looking at two taxes.
If you're in the city, you generally pay the full freight.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to contact your local state representative or state senator.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Because they are the ones that make the laws.
I do, I mean, I've been contacting a lot lately about education funds, but, you know.
All right.
But I just wanted to clarify.
You're seeing firsthand, too, just the impact of Senate Bill One on schools is so significant.
Yeah, it is.
And nonprofits.
So, yeah, I just kind of wanted to clarify some things that some people might, I wanted to make sure I understood and other people understood, that, you know, you may, because I'm going to say, if we're going to lose money and we impose one as a city, county's going to want to do the same thing, so you're going to be looking at two taxes, double, you know, and everybody's struggling with everything, and then tariffs is going to start raising all kinds of things, and people are struggling, so I just kind of was trying to clarify.
I understand.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Shelley.
Just a little more clarification, too, on that, the different rates between the wheel tax and the vehicle excise tax for some of those vehicles that might be questionable, they're based on gross vehicle weight.
Weight.
So, yeah, trucks, like, trucks, the gross vehicle weight for trucks, the breakpoint between wheel and excise is 11,000 pounds, trailers 9,000 pounds, it all, the state code clarifies all that, help.
I put my name on this list out here, I didn't know when I was going to be able to speak or...
Right now, we're speaking about the ordinance, and then, yeah, well, thank you for being here, and then at the end, we'll have public comment for those who are on the list, but right now, we're trying to get public comment on, on the ordinance for, for council. Thanks, sir.
If it's about the wheel tax, now's the time to talk.
I have four vehicles, so I'm scared to death, but anyway.
We have your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Rainey Wilson, and I live on Wilson Avenue.
Name straight after you.
Is that good enough? Do you need my house number or anything?
Yes.
2131 Wilson Avenue. And there are things that we know that this is not good. As residents here, we know this. We know we're all going to have to do this, whether we like it or not. But I think what we're here tonight for is to ask for transparency, to be heard, and to be open to some of our suggestions. And I say we bring back the parking meters to raise money for people who park all on these streets that use those spaces from that courthouse all the way up. We've got to bring them back. I think that there's other ways that, and things that we can look at to try to make this as little as painful as possible, because none of us are going to like it, but we have to do things which sometimes we don't like to do. And this man did have a point. Last year, on my street, there was a grant, they had grant money. They dug up a little dip in the road and said they had to use the grant money. There was nothing wrong, but they'd done it. And that was on Wilson Avenue. So sometimes their decisions, because I told them it had been done years back... So sometimes their decisions, because I told them it had been done years back and they went ahead and done it. But anyway, we are here, we do know, but I would like for the meters to be brought back to help raise some revenue for this issue on these wheel taxes. And thank you.
Thank you.
We got him. Just go.
Sir?
Anybody else on this ordinance?
Quick question.
Sorry, sir, you have to come to the podium. Give you one more minute.
Yep.
Does the city of Madison or the county have an occupational tax? I know where I used to live.
That's the local income tax we talked about earlier.
Excuse me?
That's the local income tax that we talked about earlier. Yes, we do.
Okay. Cause when I've worked in a city that had occupational tax, I asked them about it. They said, well, that's paying for your roads that you use to come over here. So I just want to know if they had one.
Anybody else?
I do have one more question. My husband, I'm Rainey Wilson again. My husband does pay a wheel tax already where he goes to work, but one thing they're doing also where he drives to is they're taxing his insurance on the vehicle he's driving. Do you all have any idea if Indiana is going to do anything like that?
Sorry, I don't.
They're doing it and it's right across the river. They're doing it. He's paying.
The local municipality and not the state?
He's paying wheel tax and he's paying, uh, he's being taxed on the vehicle that he's driving down that Kentucky road every day.
That would be driven by the state. The state tells us and what taxes we are enabled to adopt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you think they're?
And that's not one of them.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Okay.
You got, Gary, our financial advisors are here. Have you heard of that? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ruse?
In addition to air conditioning, we get new seats. Good God.
I'm with you.
Who are you and where do you live?
No, Rick Ruse, 1876 Michigan Road. And I just question for clarification and three comments. As far as the wheel tax is kind of a fait accompli, you got to have it by the end of August?
Yes, it has to be.
Passed by the end of August, so going to affect in January of '26.
Got it. Has to be adopted and submitted to the state.
But I didn't, is that grouped with the vehicle surtax?
They're combined. You have to adopt both.
You have to combine both. Okay. Um, I think that the city and county need to get together as far as a public forum on what the essential functions of government are, cause I don't think that's really known. But I do have questions as far as how much, Bob, you, Lord High Mayor, sorry. You said on, on the surface, but also underneath, are you talking about the, the pipes and all that stuff?
Our significant network of water and sewer infrastructure.
Do you have a total for what, what that is?
Yes, we have a capital plan for, for both of those.
Okay. So we know that the vehicle surtax and the wheel tax will pay for that?
No, it does not. No, but here's how it will work.
Okay.
Eagle, we use Main Street as an example. We collaborate internally and talk about our road improvements because we want to stop the pattern of putting catnip on the road called fresh asphalt and then, and then have a utility company or some other contractor come and cut it up. That's a very common practice that we have really, really addressed significantly the last two years with our new excavation permitting process. But the way it would work is we would work with utilities and we'd say, we're doing in 2026 and in 2027, we're doing this road project. What is our, what is our engineering report say about the condition of the below surface infrastructure there? Does it need to be replaced? And if it doesn't need to be replaced, let's start planning for that replacement now. And then that can either be embedded into the road construction or it can be supported by an investment by our utility department. It just depends. But with this wheel tax and the amount that we're talking about, it's not going to deal with any subsurface utility work. It's really about road construction, repair and maintenance.
I think for the public's good, I think the city council and the county council need to get together as far as savings, as far as decreasing the amount of spending that's, that's going on. If this is such a big priority and it sounds like it is, and I suggest paving Clifton and paving Main Street, the rest of it, you know, catch as catch can. But that's got to be your sho, your showpiece of this city. We've got two major roads. Uh, second thing, um, we, the city of Madison or Jefferson County needs to, uh, get together a third house meeting for state senators and state representatives, cause we haven't had one in years.
Yeah.
The Republican Party dropped the ball, Chamber of Commerce dropped the ball. I think it's time for one of the government indices, entities to do that. Uh, the third thing is, is if your golf carts are part of this thing, I think you got to recuse yourself, Councilman Bartlett.
Wait, what? Yeah, just to be clear, he was asking about a certain type of, and I think they're actually not called a cart. It's a low speed vehicle. And so there's about, as far as we know it, there's 11 or 12 owners of low speed vehicles that receive an actual license plate from the BMV. His, the, the cart company that he has an interest in, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, have no low speed vehicles.
Right. All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. You know, as we go through the budget process, nothing's off the table. We're going to be looking at fines and fees, um, as another, you know, revenue source because many of those don't get addressed for a very, very long time. And now it's, it's time to try to dust off the, all of those. Any other comments on?
Anything else on the, uh, 20, what was it?
11, 2025.
2025 11. Okay, seeing none. That will go on to second reading at the next meeting and will be voted on unless otherwise dealt with. The last and final ordinance is ordinance number 2025-12, and that is an ordinance of the common council of the city of Madison, Indiana, amending the zoning map of the city of Madison, Indiana. And this is dealing with 3515 plus North Michigan Road. Um, and it is asking it to be changed from residential mobile home to high density residential, R32.
And I'll just say, I think the developer of the property, Mr. Pettit's here tonight too. If there's any comments on, or questions on that.
So my first question is, oh, is it time for questions?
Yeah.
Well, if we could, go ahead and let's get it on.
First reading.
Oh, it is first reading. You're right. Good Lord.
Can I give a little quick introduction to it?
Yeah.
Yes, Carla, fire away.
Um, so this came to the plan commission recently. Um, the plan commission unanimously voted to provide no recommendation on this. There were a few members of the public in attendance at the meeting who had concerns about the use of the property and, um, what, what could be done there. The developer is looking to build, um, a large number of duplex properties, but not subdivide the property. So I think the, the logic behind providing no recommendation was because this zoning change will be the only opportunity the neighboring property owners will have to voice their concerns, because it, without subdividing the property, there won't be another public hearing. It'll just be up to the, the owner of the property to, to do with it what they want. So, um, it, it enabled the, um, council just to have their own, form their own opinions on this based on, on what any, any neighbors may, um, like to share. My, as a member of the plan commission, my, my personal take on the project was that it, it would be a, a good, good addition to the, uh, buffer zone. I believe this is in the buffer zone, I believe. Um, and, um, I, I personally didn't see anything wrong with, with the application or proposal.
So can you, uh, council, you're the only one here from the planning commission, right?
Mm-hmm.
The others are absent.
Yeah.
Why the no decision? Cause they were going to be able to come, it has to come to city council anyway and they're going to get a chance to talk here, but.
Yes.
Why not give us a recommendation?
The developer of the property does not intend to subdivide it, subdivide it, as he stated at the meeting, but does intend to build a large number of duplex properties on it. So if, if he had sought to subdivide the property and then build each duplex on its own parcel, there would be a separate hearing for that and these neighbors would be able to address their concerns at that hearing. But because of the concerns of joining property owners, and I believe there were also some drainage issues that, um, planning was working, um, with the, the owner on the site about, um, we decided to just provide no, no recommendation and just leave it up to the council with a blank slate.
Okay. So did you not feel like you had enough information or you wanted to hear more information at this meeting?
If, if, yeah, if the neighbors decided it was something they wanted to pursue.
Okay. And how many duplexes? I can see the three, but I can't, on the copy here, 30?
Mr. Pettit, you want to come up?
I can see it starts with a three.
Yeah, we have the application. I just can't read how many duplexes. Okay.
Thank you.
So 36.
Yes, 36.
And that's 36 duplexes, so 72 uni, you know.
Yes. Right now, it's approved for, I could put 64 mobile homes in there right now. That's what it's approved for. I'm suggesting duplexes instead of mobile homes.
So I know one of the issues that was brought up at the other meeting was, um, the trees, you know, and how many of them would have to come down? And I think you referenced probably all of them. Is that what you said at the meeting?
Yes, but we've, I've talked to the neighbors. We've had a couple or one meeting outside of here and they're here tonight, I think they want to speak too. But I've agreed to leave as many trees as possible and take as few trees as possible just to build the structures and the roadways. Mr. Pettit, I should just get a little closer to the mic. Okay. So just pull that, that'll, that'll bend. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. So as many as possible.
We're going to leave as many trees as possible. Yes.
And so maybe to try to help buffer between?
Between the neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the one I would be most concerned with would be along the edges, you know, to kind of give it a.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else, uh, from the council as for comments or questions on this ordinance?
No, I, I don't.
Okay. Anything from the audience?
Shirley Bean, and I live at 3430 North Quail. And what I didn't realize was if you look in the back, I think he gave you the, okay, he plans to make a road that I didn't know, from where the, where his condos are, all the way in back of where we live and join it on North Quail to Audubon Park. If you know the road, it's very small, it's a neighborhood. Do you know how much traffic that's going to cause? And he's going to do that to give the people an access out instead of using Michigan Road. Do you see where I'm talking about?
Yes, we can see.
Yeah. That is a, a major concern in the neighborhood, because like I said, it's very small, it's very narrow and there's going to be a lot of traffic on that road. And the other one, uh, that I'm concerned about is the flooding. We have a terrible flooding problem on that road. So he says he's going to fix the drainage. Can he? I don't know. And then when he first started out, it was 24 units. Now it's going to 36. And so my property line, then there's a ditch and then there's the trees. And I'm the one who was concerned about the trees and the, the wildlife that lives back there.
I might just add the permitting process. You've raised a couple of good issues that have to go through a permitting process in order it actually constructs. So there's two processes. One is zoning it, uh, zoning it so that it's compatible to the uses around it. And based on, based on what I've seen and the zoning designations of the other parcels around it, housing is compatible with everything else that's around there. So that's the zoning piece of it. And then actually build it would be the permitting process. So in order to get a building permit, he would have to submit a site plan and development plan to the city planning office. Our building inspector and city planner would be reviewing that. And we would not have anything to do with what you've described as getting a curb cut out of that parcel onto another, I'm assuming that's a county road over there in Audubon Park. So the county would actually have to approve him getting a secondary ingress egress on that parcel. The state would have to approve the, the drainage plan. And we would require all of those permits before a, in addition to the, you know, the actual product that's being built, the city would require all of those ancillary permits to be gathered together before they could get a building permit if the property is rezoned. So those are the, kind of the two steps in, in the process. I just want to let you know so that you don't think that there's no oversight on any of the concerns that you've expressed. There is a permitting process that's designed for that.
Well, I moved here from North Carolina and I bought that piece of property where my house is. Because of the trees, we built a deck. It's beautiful. And now with this, how many trees is it going to be able to save? Who knows? Now I'm going to have to look out to maybe trailer park or condos. So my value of my house is going to go down.
Well, I, I would just say that, and again, there's, there's another property owner who also has rights and due process. And then, and then I would also add that your view is hopefully you, you guys can be good neighbors. I hope you can. But encroaching is always an issue whenever there's any development. And I'll just say that, uh, uh, you could put trees on your property and he could leave trees, abutting the property, and that may make a really good combination and a good outcome for both of you. I'm just saying not, don't exclude that opportunity either. Yeah.
Okay. And then I think Cheryl's going to talk about the DNR part of this, or Mr. May. Are you going to talk about the DNR part of this?
I wouldn't address that. I can though.
I wish you would.
This is on first reading too, so we're, uh, we're getting comment tonight. And then at our next meeting on, uh, August the 6th, there'll be another opportunity for public comment before council and the mayor make a decision on the application. August 5th, excuse me. I'm blind. August 5th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Pettit met with myself and a couple of the folks that live back there and we do appreciate that. It was a good meeting. He allayed some of our fears or some of my fears. Drainage is number one. The folks that live at the tail end of, uh, Quail back there have just been, uh, it's a swamp back there and the, the work that Seadham did about 12 years ago helped some of us, others of us, it helped a little for a little while, and now they're back to just being flooded all the time when there's any substantial rain. So anything that makes that worse, I'm going to fight tooth and nail. We can't, we cannot do that to them. Um, Mr. Pettit said that he was going to build a retain, a retention pond back there.
Mr. Pettit said that he was going to build a retain, a retention pond back there. So that, that is good news for me, that helps me. He, there was three issues, drainage, property values, and the view. He, he did say that he was going to leave some trees that would be a buffer there. And he also mentioned that, I, I don't believe personally that property values, they're going to be nice homes. If he does the duplexes, those duplexes are going to be high-end duplexes. They're going to be nice. So overall, it looks to me like it could possibly and probably be a plus for us as a neighborhood and maybe for my district, but I'm not 100% convinced yet. So I would ask the council tonight to allow the second reading, give me a little more time to, to, to do two things. Number one, is this going to benefit my constituents? If not, is there anything I can do to stop it? So I want to be able to do a little more legwork to find answers to both of those questions. If you guys will allow a second reading, give me more time to, to find out more about this subject. Also, I need to, we need to look into DNR and what they will allow. And I'm just not sure about a lot of things right now. Also, as far as the wheel tax, my understanding is there can't be any double hit of the wheel tax. That's what I've been told. I'm not sure about that, but I've been told that you're not going to get hit twice.
Yeah, I think the confusion on that is in this Senate bill, a lot of the versions have that in there up until the one that they finally enforced.
So they took that provision out so you can get hit twice? Well, then I stand corrected. We, that's, that's not good. I, I don't like that. That's something we need to talk about at the council, at the county council. So that's a shame. I don't like that. We have lots to talk about. Yes, we do. Thank you. The next couple, thank you so much for being here, Councilman.
I would just encourage Mr. Pettit to try to leave like as many trees as possible. Like there are only eight trees between you and the farm next to you right now. And currently it's just a forest. And I know you can't leave all of them, I get that. But I would just encourage you as, as a good neighbor to try to leave more than eight trees there.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to talk about this ordinance? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, it will move on to second reading.
Okay, we're winding down on the official business of this evening. Appreciate everybody, I know it's warm, very warm. We do not have any bills on second reading, so we'll go to public comments per our sign-up sheet. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Krebs. And I think we, she has the list.
Okay, so I know some of you have already talked and so you can just pass, that's fine. I also want to remind you that this time is for you to address the city council. It's not a time to address the mayor. The mayor, you can go see the mayor on your own time. You can call us too. A lot of the questions that we get here, we could easily answer through a phone call. So I want to remind you that we are here and we're supposed to be of service to you. And our numbers are on the website, as much as I don't like that. My personal cell number is on the website. You can call me or text me anytime with the questions. Okay, so please address the council. That's why we're here, for city council. So number one on my list is Keith Schmidt. It's your time.
I didn't know before, thank you guys.
You're welcome, sir.
I wanted to address the, pardon?
Your address, please. Where do you live?
Okay, Keith Schmidt, 203 West Wood Lane, right up here, you can hit it with a rock. I want to address the south side of Green Road in between Lanier Drive and Craigmont Street. The drain there and where it's been resurfaced so many times. And I talked to a real nice lady with the city street department. She said that they were sort of uncertain about whether that was Madison or the state. So I contacted Endot and that was in April, I started all that. I got back ahold of me May the 7th and said that the, where they've paved at coming off Lanier Drive is as far as the state goes. So the, the, the drain's plugged. Every time it gets blown out, which is every time it rains and everything else, everybody's been by there. They come back and they repatch that over and over and over. Well, it kind of blocks the drain all the way around. I personally would like to see that section of road repaired. So, I mean, there's thousands of cars that use that every day, school buses during the school year and all that stuff. And I mean, if you don't know it's there, when you go through with your car, it's about to take your front end out. But I would like to see it addressed.
So is it in front of like EOMuncy Schools or the state hospital? Like, give us more specific.
Like before, where you're making the turn, like you're going towards Swifty Gasoline Station or whatever it is there.
Uh huh.
If you veer to the left, it's on the east side of Green Road, the south side of the road in between Lanier Drive and Craigmont Street.
The little nub back behind the outdoor shop and?
Where the gun shop used to be, kind of that little block?
Yeah, well, it's before you, yeah, it's back, back behind there. They put those drains in years ago because that water would come off in the alley and would come off that road. And it picked, it would flood out that nearly new store that was in there that's gone now. But it's plugged now and the water stands all the time. And it's just, you know, you come back and you throw, you just throw more money and more money and more money at it.
Okay, so if it's over by nearly new, that's my district. I thought it was west. Is it east or west of Craigmont? Tell me that for starters.
It is west of Craigmont.
Okay, so that's your district, right? I'm just, no, I'm just trying to, no, because we will follow up and I'm just trying to figure out which one of us needs to follow up.
We could get your phone number and our street superintendent right over there could call you and get an exact location of it.
They're, they're really nice people.
Yeah, it's the small section of the Y.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's what he's talking about. It's the little, I know exactly where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sandy Palmer. Thank you, ma'am. Shirley Bean. Thank you. Rainey Wilson, finished? I mean, I know you talked, finished, okay. Dwayne has spoken, Dwayne finished? Okay. Andy Crabtree? Okay, thank you. Porter Strasberg? What a great German name that is. Okay. And Rick Ruse, finished? You're my last person? No. Are you finished? All right, that's it, mayor, thank you.
What a meeting. Well, thanks everybody. This was a good educational, thank to our guests from Reed Financial being here. At the next meeting, which will be August the 5th, we'll have the second reading of both of these ordinances. We'll have more education to, to share with everybody. We're going to do a, an overview or an update on the policy development that we had worked on. That was really 2024, 25 policy priorities. And then talk about the next kind of wave of new policies that have to happen because what we do in the city is really driven by the good policies. That allows us to, to make changes. And we're also going to do another dive into capital planning. I mentioned it earlier that we've got roads, utilities, stormwater, facilities, parks, and, you know, in the city, probably over $100 million of infrastructure investments that we have to maintain. So we will be, as I mentioned earlier, as we go into the 2026 budget season and beyond, we've got to identify how are we going to address and have coexist delivery of essential services and as well as making investments. Making investments that don't, you know, break the bank, but also don't defer for another, you know, 10 or 20 or 30 years, problems that we have that are chronic problems that we have to address. So at the next meeting, I will be introducing for councils, reviewing and the community's consideration food and beverage tax. Long overdue in our community, given our, the state of our, of our community and the needs and the purposes for it. But we'll have another thoughtful discussion like we did today about, you know, raising additional funds to make targeted investments and doing it in a responsible way. Our next meeting, as I said, is August the 5th. We will have a Plan Commission meeting for the riverfront zoning specifically on August the 6th. And I'll let everybody know that so far it looks like we're going to be successful in live streaming that meeting. I know, I know that a lot of people want to attend that meeting, but they also want to watch it. We have a lot of interest in that development initiative. But we will do our best to, and as of, as of now, we, we believe we'll be successful in live streaming it and hosting it at Ivy Tech at 6 o'clock on August the 6th. So that would be Wednesday, August the 6th, that's coming up. Council will entertain a motion and adjourn unless you have other things to add.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I was like, see, they're dead near me, he's just really in the zone.
No, I was trying to move. He gets irritated if I don't turn the camera to the presentation so the people streaming can see it. So I could have done both.
Ah, it's okay, you handled it pretty well.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.